I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the full Board of Education meeting for the school district of Waukesha on Wednesday, June 11th, 2014. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and we'd like to begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was in Boy Scouts and I always want to say "two" after that, but fortunately I didn't. Stacy, will you please call the roll?
William Baumgart. Barbara Brzink. Steve Edlund. Ellen Langel. Patricia Madden. Patrick McCaffrey. Kurt O'Brien. Karen Reinacek. Joseph Como.
Here. And Stacy, will you also please let us know if the meeting was properly posted with the media?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gray, do we have bright lights tonight?
We do not.
And that's a darn because that's usually one of our favorite parts of the meeting. But we're winding up school here.
For 24 hours left, I think people are trying to wind down a little bit, so.
The lights are dimming.
At this time, we'll move on to our recognitions and this evening, we do have one recognition. Chris Hedstrom, will you please introduce the person who will be recognized? And tell us a little bit about her.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to inform the board that the Employee Recognition Award for June 2014 is being presented this evening to Terry Lynn Johnson. Terry Lynn, would you please join me at the podium? Terry Lynn started with the school district of Waukesha in 1987. She is currently serving students at E-Achieve Academy and this evening, she's really going out with a bang because I think she has two more days of work left. She's retiring. Terry Lynn's nominators begin by saying that serving students with special education needs in the virtual school environment can be a tall order. E-Achieve is a rigorous school and it can be especially challenging environment for students with special education needs. Terry Johnson has helped many students to find success in this environment. From the perspective of families that she's worked with and the evidence we see with students completing high school in E-Achieve, even with significant special education needs, Terry knows how to accommodate many different types of learning needs. She suggests accommodations that may be successful for her students. She is also, also has a wealth of knowledge and experience from which she draws to help students learn. She finds resources for students to use to help them complete assignments and has shared many websites, graphic organizers, graphing websites, and countless other resources to help students navigate the online school. On behalf of the school district of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Terry Lynn Johnson on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award. Congratulations.
I came here a long time ago. I actually attended South High School for one semester. I counted every day. I did not want to be in Wisconsin. I'd just moved from Illinois. I told my mom, "We're moving where there's a stagecoach in Indians," because that's all I remembered from visiting the Dells as a young child. I said, "It's not Chicago. Sorry, I'm not going." And I told my mom, I arranged my own place to stay in Illinois and chose not to come. And the day before my family was moving, I said, "Okay, I'm coming with you." And I've been a Wisconsinite ever since. I even switched from the Bears and am a great Packers fan. It's been an honor to work in Waukesha. And I've worked at Butler Middle School for 21 years and the last six years at E-Achieve. Each time, in the changes that I made in both this school district and I worked for three other districts over the last 34 years and in the field of business, it's always been because there was a new opportunity. And I kept thinking along the way, "How long will I stay with Waukesha? Will I go back to business? Will I do other things?" But there was always a new opportunity, whether it was changing from sixth, or seventh, eighth, ninth at Butler to seventh and eighth, going to the team venue of middle school, going to, working at E-Achieve. It's always been a wonderful delight and challenge for me. And I feel I've always learned as much as my students and families did. And I feel grateful that I've had the opportunities that I've had to grow as an educator. My own daughter attended Waukesha schools. I'm very proud of her. And because I'm retiring, this is even so much more meaningful. Many, many families over the years have become even dear friends to me. And of course, the educators, the administrators I've met. So with a heavy heart, I accept this gladly, but I want to say it's hard to lead them. I didn't think it would be, but it really is. So thank you, all of you. And to the Vannick family, I know. And the E-Achieve staff and recognition have been wonderful. I know I have two days left, but I know I'll be working next week on things still to finish everything properly. But thank you so much for these opportunities and I appreciate it all.
Thank you, Terry, for those 27 years of dedicated service to our students, for being a team player, and for setting an example for others to follow, a true example. We truly appreciate it. Less than 1% of our employees received this award, so there's only a number of them given out each year, less than 12, no more than 12. And so, thank you so much for your 27 years, Terry. Enjoy your retirement.
Well, it's last two days to my new position, moving on to the college level, but thank you so much.
Well, we wish you luck with those endeavors.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, we're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes of time to speak. And this is a time for our board to listen to our community members. And at about two and a half minutes, Barb Brzink will give a warning that there's roughly 30 seconds left to speak. And if you could wrap up your comments soon after Barb gives you that signal, we truly appreciate it. We expect the audience will be respectful of the speaker of the Board of Education and will refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will distract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, I ask that you please silence your phones at this time. And tonight, it looks like we have eight or nine speakers. Our first speaker is Frank Remfree. Mr. Remfree, come forward. How are you? It's been a while since we've seen each other.
In fact, I'm going to mention our past experience. First of all, I can't remember if I'm supposed to get my address.
Yes, please. We do have it on the record, but you can.
I haven't been here in two years. Okay. It's 2702 Lancaster. Frank Remfree is my name. I served 34 years in the Waukesha district as a classroom teacher, department chair, administrator, and had the opportunity to teach in all six secondary buildings and plus Saratoga one summer. And also, I would like to make sure I start off on a little positive note. I want to commend all the people. First of all, I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the Les Paul proposal to rename, rename Central Middle School. And I want to commend the supporters of that proposal because I think Central Middle School does deserve to be named after someone, as does Horning and Butler. However, and I would also quickly salute Les Paul for all of his accomplishments and his legacy and his inventions and so on. One of my kids did a report on Les Paul, probably four or five different times throughout their 12 years. So our family's well acquainted with all of his accomplishments. One of the highlights I had in my 34 years, among many, and of course, one was being Mr. Como's seventh grade teacher. Joe came to me, a young, illiterate young man.
Some things never change.
I taught him how to read and write, but no. But anyway, one of the main accomplishments and experiences I wanted to highlight was when I was at South, I was charged by our principal, Mark Hansen, to come up with a way of capturing the legacy of Waukesha South and by default, Waukesha High School because we had a huge history to tap, to serve as role models for our kids. So we came up, we recruited people from the community. In fact, publicly, for the first time, I can reveal, former Governor Dreyfus was on our committee. He didn't want anybody to know about it. He wanted to serve anonymously because we had a lot of tough decisions to make with what we eventually named the Wall of Fame. And we came up with criteria. One of the criteria was to make sure our nominees were graduates. And that's the main reason I'm here tonight, to oppose the idea of Les Paul being the, naming Central Middle School after him. Because he, as we learned from that experience, he does not have a high school diploma from Waukesha. We did thorough research. We looked for all kinds of spellings of his name to see if maybe there was a mistake and he did indeed graduate, but we couldn't find anything. And today, it wouldn't take much of a search to verify that.
Wind up, please.
We have many graduates of our system that were nominated for the Wall of Fame when I was at South, entrepreneurs, pioneers of medical achievements, Olympians, inventors, entertainers, war heroes, all graduates of our system. And I would look forward to being on a committee to, to search for a different nominee for whom Central can be renamed, but one who is a graduate. So I appreciate the opportunity to express myself tonight and I do urge the board to, to vote against the nomination, or the notion, I should say, of renaming Central Middle School after Les Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Remfree. And thank, thank you for teaching me how to read. Okay, next, we have Mary Thorpe and on deck, Philip Jones. And I do have your address, Mary, so.
You do have it.
Yes.
Okay. I'm a lifelong resident of Waukesha and proud to be, and my grandparents on both sides also were lifelong residents. I am a teacher and proud to be, and I am a graduate of the Waukesha schools, so proud to be. I just wanted to identify myself so you'd understand my interest in this. I taught second grade for five years, then went on and got an advanced degree and started an early childhood program and daycare group, which still exists today, and then was invited to go and become part of the faculty at WCTC where I taught in the associate degree program for 30 years. I want to read something. You don't need to bow your heads, but you can think about this because it has important lyrics. This is the Waukesha Loyalty Song. "Waukesha, all praise to thee, praise to thee in word and song. Thy light shall ever be a beacon, clear and strong. We will always work and fight to uphold thee in thy might. We will guard thy fame and adore thy name. Waukesha, all praise to thee." I came to the meeting last Monday night and I was here a month ago to both meetings. I got home and thought about everything that had been new to me. I'm not used to political meetings. And I thought about this loyalty song and thought that the words of that song, "We will adore thy name," apply to our situation. I also had some other thoughts about that meeting where we were as proponents or opposed, opponents of the name change. We're limited to three minutes each, but the people on the board talked endlessly about personal opinions. And I felt that the allotted time to the citizens was not, it was out of balance with the time used by the board members. So a great portion of, of what we heard last month was said again. In addition, last Monday night, two days ago, it was said that the votes of the people who affirmed this proposed change were based on the fact that many people who want this change are out there, out there. "We don't know where they are," I'm quoting Mr. Como. "We know they're out there and our votes are based on this, but we don't know where they are. They weren't here. Our group was here. We were in..." Where were they? We are in opposition and we are here. We were here last week. Thirteen of us were here. There were 175 names on petitions submitted to the board. There were 16 letters to the editors in three or four weeks. And I think that was only exceeded perhaps by, in the past, by letters about the West Bypass.
Time.
So, all right. There's no mistaking that there is opposition. It is significant and it does continue. I want to summarize. The proposal came from the foundation for this name change. It was not sought by anybody. There's been, second point, there's much recognition of Mr. Les Paul.
Please wrap up, Mary.
That's been given and adequate honor. I think Moore would be overkill. I think it would reduce the honor that is already in existence. And I, the last point I want to make is that I don't think that a sign is inspiration. Teachers are motivators and inspiration.
Thank you, thank you, Mary. We, we need to be fair to everyone here, so.
Well, that's what I said earlier.
We're trying to wrap it up at three minutes.
All right. I will.
Thank you for your comments, Mary.
I'm finished. I've tried to be brief and I've tried to summarize what I believe to be main points. I would request personally that the board would table this or would consider asking the foundation to lift their, perhaps, potential refusal of a scholarship or an auditorium name, something. And in finishing, I'd like to thank the Freeman reporter for her report of last week's meeting. Very accurate and well done. I'd like to thank Mr. McCaffrey for his vote in opposition and for his brevity. And I would like to thank you all for listening.
Okay, Philip Jones and Ben Thiel is next. I truly would appreciate it if we would stick to our three minutes, so that, that is what is fair.
My name is Philip Jones. I live at 344 Green Meadow Drive. I have two things I'd like to talk about. One is the naming of the school. I think we've got the past history of more important people than Les Paul to name that school after. I come from a family of 10 kids. All of us went to Waukesha High School and I, my, rest of my family I talked to, they don't care for the idea. I think we had superintendents and principals that have done a lot more service for this school system than Les Paul ever thought of doing. My other subject is, two years ago, I live by North High School. North High School is right, fence line is right behind me. They used to mow the grass and trim along the fence line. When I said to the guy that was doing the mowing, I said, "Hey, can you cut, trim that fence line? It looks terrible." "Oh, sure." So he went and sprayed it with weed killer. Well, it all came over my ear. It killed my grass for about three feet along the fence line. So I came down here and I talked to the lady in the office over there. And a fellow came up to me and, up to my house and talked to me about it. "Oh, sure, we're going to take care of it. We're going to plant your new grass." Never happened. That was last spring he came up and talked to me. So I want to put it before you people that I'd like to have something done with my grass. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll have.
And I still, I still stand against Les Paul.
We'll, we'll make sure someone in our district contacts you on that. Okay, Ben Thiel is up with Paul Reese on deck. Good to see you again, Mr. Thiel.
My name is Ben Thiel. I live at 2842 Rain Tree Lane in Rivers Crossick, just south of West High School. The F and F Committee has probably seen and heard enough from me in the past two meetings. But I'm here to continue to express my opposition to the proposed name change of Central Middle School. I'm very disappointed in the action that took place in Monday's F and F meeting. I am still vehemently opposed to any name change, as are 175 others of like mind, as witnessed by the petitions that were presented. There are very few venues for the citizenry to state their feelings, other than the newspapers, petitions, and meetings like this. I find it interesting that except for one article from the Les Paul Foundation asking for the name and change in name, there was only one other writer to advocate for that name change, as opposed to many writers who made their wishes of opposition stated in letters to the media. At the meeting this past Monday evening, it was stated that there are many people in favor of the name change. Why are they not here to advocate for that proposal? Why didn't Moore write their approval in the media? To me, that represents apathy rather than advocacy. On the other hand, numerous opponents have appeared in print and in person to make their feelings known. I understand there are two sides to every question, but why is it that only opponents are vocal in their viewpoint? It's because we have strong feelings about the proposal. Where are the strong feelings of those that approve the name change? Don't they care enough to voice their approval? Once again, I ask that the full Board of Education find another, a different way to honor Les Paul and his many accomplishments. Thank you for listening to my octogenarian rant. I do have strong feelings. And by the wife, by the way, my wife, who spoke at the last two F and F meetings, also agrees with what I said here and previously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thiel. Mr. Paul Reese and then on deck is Sue Baker.
I'm Paul Reese, Ave. 41, Genesee Street. Some things have been said about Mr. Les Paul's education. And I would like to talk about the greatest education I ever got. And it was from a woman named Catherine Reese, my grandmother. And one thing that left me the false taste in my mouth in the F and F meeting was, I, my grandmother, in all my life, let me put it this way, in all my life that I've known her, and my cousins can attest to this as well, I've never heard that woman ever speak ill of any living person, much less talk bad of someone who's passed away. That is just one of the lessons she, she left me in life that I can never live up to. Another one is, is this here. She, she left me a great understanding of this. And Solomon is the third king of Israel. And Solomon was not a very good man, as in his youth. This is not a book of all righteous men. It shows their defects of character. And in Solomon's youth, he was not very good. And he wrote a book called Ecclesiastics that talks about that. And he gets into that as he's old and when he's waning in years and he's realizing that all he toiled for was the wind. And I think as we get old, our memories are what we have left. We don't make new ones. We, we live with the ones and we cherish them. I, I know for myself, I went to Central. I had my chance. I blew it. It's not about me anymore. It's about the kids that are going there.
Half minute.
I, I am, I'm glad I'm not in your positions tonight. I, I don't know how I would vote. I listened to Sue Barker talk last night at the F and F meeting. I was reminded of that gracious woman, my grandmother, how pleasant she spoke in that. And it really, really left a, a, a good feeling with me. It just, that reminded me of that. And I, I thank you for, for your time and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Sue Baker and then Charlie Becker next.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. As I said at the Monday meeting, I, I find this process somewhat heavy. We, the Les Paul Foundation approached the school board, asking the school board to consider the renaming of Central Middle School because we wanted to give it as a gift. We're very protective of Les Paul's name. But Les Paul loved Waukesha and he was very concerned about the children. Was he perfect? Oh, no, he wasn't. He certainly wasn't. But he did care and that's what this is about. Our hope is that it would help the students, help the teachers, help the students. That's what this is about. It isn't about, Les Paul doesn't need another honor. He's in a whole string of halls of fame, including the National Inventors Hall of Fame. If you were looking on the internet on his birthday last Monday, you would have seen all sorts of people speaking up about all the things he's given to our country and the world. So this is just something, a gift, that the Les Paul Foundation, acting in Les's name, would like to give to the students of what is now Central Middle School and to the school district. And I trust you will do what is best. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Becker and then Tariq Akmut is up after him.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Charlie Betker. I resonate at 944 Oakland Avenue, longtime resident. I think we're talking, we should be talking about the history of Central Middle School. That was the first high school that the city of Waukesha has had, and it's probably the oldest in Waukesha County. And some of the other schools throughout the county have been gone, such as Peewauckee that burned down in the 50s or late, early 60s. I, for one, feel that there's other ways that they could pass Les's name through, to the children, other than naming Central Middle School with his name. And another thing is that bothers me, there's a, there's a name on the existing building, which is Worthington. And Worthington was a principal in excess of 30 years. He also started the vocational school, which we're in today. And when he, when he stepped down, Mr. Lindholm took over and that's how the, this building got the name Lindholm. And then when Lindholm left, he also, Tony Natalezzo took it another step further and he created WCTC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Akmut?
Thank you, President Como. Members of the board, Superintendent Gray. I am here today to speak against the naming of Central Middle School with Les Paul's name. There's no doubt that Les Paul has had significant accomplishments during his life, an inventor, innovator, and many other things. You know, changed the history of music. Waukesha has a good music program. Maybe the music program for the school district of Waukesha could be named after him, or an auditorium at one of the schools. I think the, the city has had a tradition of naming some of its school buildings after people who were educators or made significant contribution. Banting Elementary, Horning Middle School, I think, come to mind. I've been in Waukesha since 1992. We have honored Les Paul, not only in the city of Waukesha, but at the county with the exhibit, permanent exhibit in, in his honor. We have Guitar Town downtown Waukesha, which you can go to. We have Guitar Town downtown Waukesha, which you can go tomorrow and enjoy Friday Night's Live. But I think the building at the school district should be named after someone who has contributed to the education. In a narrow sense, you could say to the students in Waukesha. In a broader sense, you could even pick an educator who has had state or national excellence for education. And I think that would be the way, you know, because we go around, you know, we are a celebrity-driven society, okay? An educator, people don't look at them as celebrities, but they are the ones who have significant impact. All of us, at various times, have had an... We have had a teacher, a professor someplace, who has had an impact on us. So therefore, I would ask you not to make a decision today. Send the matter back to the Finance and Facilities Committee. Let's do a redo on this. And if Central Middle School, or one of our high schools, has to be named for someone, let it be someone who has contributed significantly to the education. There are many other ways that we can recognize Les Paul for. There's no way it diminishes... Not naming Central Middle School after him won't diminish his memory and his achievements. But we can take this opportunity to name one of our buildings after someone who has made significant educational contributions. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's everyone that has signed up to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to step forward? And if so, state your name and address for the record. All right, we will move on then to our minute approval. We had our May 14th, 2014, regular board meeting, and that was it for our minutes.
I'll move approval of the May 14th board meeting.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart. Any discussion? Stacy, will you call the roll?
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Abstained.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Joe Como.
Aye. It passes eight yeses and one abstention. Moving on to our communications, Mr. Gray.
Everything was included in packets this week. They were all regarding the Les Paul naming, and those were included in the FNF packets.
Yeah, I believe everything that the board received too was included in that.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Moving on to our Safety Committee report. That'll be given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. Safety Committee met this morning, reviewed and accepted the accident reports for students and staff. There was nothing particularly unusual in the reports this month. Second item Glenn reported on the summer projects. We have an extremely extensive list this coming year, the majority of which are maintenance items for many of our schools, almost all of them, repairs, updating, and things like that. There's a few remodeling projects planned, excuse me, at Butler for the plans for the Quest program, which we're going to be putting in there, at Horning, an extension on the Flight Academy, the engineering and healthcare charter schools, some additional space for them, and some work being done in remodeling in the media area at West. And of course, there's the three projects for the synthetic... It's always a tongue twister for me, the synthetic turfs at the high schools, one of which is already underway. One more item, we met with the new representative from the Hayes Company, which is the new agency that we'll be using for our insurance programs. And our next meeting will be scheduled for August.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. And as in the past, why don't you roll right into the charter school?
I will do that.
Thank you.
The report on our charter schools and special programs. This past Saturday, the governance boards from STEM, the Engineering Academy, and the Health Academy went through a governance board training session with Barry Golden from the Wisconsin Innovative School Network, just to understand the responsibilities and procedures that they should be following. No report back yet as to what's going to happen, but we'll watch them. Charter schools have been working on updating their contracts, and I will be asking, I'm going to be asking for some dates which we could get the boards together. We have to approve the contracts. There are renewals on contracts. We have to approve that. So if you would take a minute with me, I would like to give you some dates, and we can see how many we might have. Can I do that right now?
Yes, yes, Bill.
Looking at doing this in the relatively near future, I have identified, you might want to make a note of these, I've identified June 17th, 18th, 24th, or 25th as possible dates that I can make, and Joe can make it. And I think Todd, you didn't respond, but I assume you can make it.
Are Tuesdays and Wednesdays?
Yeah.
Tuesday and Wednesday of the next two weeks. So let's start with the 17th. Is there somebody that cannot make the 17th? No good?
We're good.
Two cannot. Okay. So two cannot. How about the 18th?
Bill, what time are you talking about during the...
Oh, this would be about... We haven't set the time, but I can adjust that. Usually around 6:00 or 6:30.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Please.
Our technology, is that the 18th?
That's the 16th.
The 23rd.
23rd.
23rd at 6:30.
Okay. If it's late on the 18th, I can make it 7:00 or so.
So nobody has a no for the 18th? How late would be late?
7:00 or so.
24th. Any no's? And 25th? Two cannot. 24th looks a possible.
I prefer the 24th if that's...
Okay, we will work on the 24th. Todd, if we can get copies of those, we're going to... You and I talked about getting them.
Okay. Now, I think people are on the 18th, right? There was not an issue with the 18th?
18th was just one person if we did it late, so that would be another option.
Well, the only reason I'm looking at the 18th is if there are some changes that have to come back, you're really pushing it on the 24th. So if we could somehow get it done on the 18th, that would be preferable.
So we could meet on the 18th, and if we had to do a revision?
24th could be the backup.
Okay, first choice, 18th.
At 7:00.
At 7:00. Okay. And we're not expecting any major overhauls of these contracts. Just so you know, mostly what we're dealing with is revisions and updates.
Yeah, basically, Eacheave, we're looking at the addition of K-5, and then there's two paragraph changes in STEM, and they're basically a few words in each one, so.
We just thought it'd be more convenient to cap, you know, to deal with all of the contracts for all of the charter schools, all at one time. It would be easier for us to, and more efficient for us, to do it that way.
Right. Okay, a couple more updates. Health Academy had their senior banquet, and students put together a PowerPoint. I have not seen it, but maybe we can get copies of that posted so you can see it. The kids tell you where they're going to school and what their plans are. Again, outstanding successes over there. Rich reports that some of the students will be attending two-year associate degrees, four-year degrees, military for training, and student, oh, GI, yeah, training, okay. Engineering Academy graduating class this year will be 14 seniors. Colleges, just as a kind of a listing of the colleges, they're picking out, and this is really powerful. Denison, UW-Waukesha, St. Louis University, UW-Madison, UW-Plattville, UW-Milwaukee, MIT, Worcester Polytech, and University of Minnesota. So we have, they're all going someplace. I mean, this is wonderful. The governance board, I mentioned that the governance boards received the training last Saturday. STEM Randall is looking forward to some walls coming down and the space being changed into Makerspace and the Digital Media Lab. That's part of the work being done this summer. I guess I forgot to include that in that previous list. And they received a grant from Waukesha Education Foundation, which will be funding their media lab. So thank you to the Education Foundation. Eacheave, Rick has reported that he is anticipating 120 graduates on Sunday, this coming week, weekend. By the way, I've asked all of them to give me, if they can give me a report on the graduation. I'll try and get that in one of the upcoming packets. Rick responded with his 120. And then he, he's always careful to couch things, as you know. While Eacheave's total graduation rate of 62.3% is low compared to the district and high schools and the state standards, it's significantly better than all of the other big virtual schools in Wisconsin. The problem of having no ability to prevent truancy hiders from enrolling, and then having no way to compel them back to the resident districts to re-enroll, leaving us as the last school of attendance and the school against which the dropout will be counted, blah, blah, blah. You can see, he's defending his 62.3%, but there's reasons for it, that it's not up in the 90s, so.
Bill, will you share the range of the other virtual schools?
Actually, I've got, he sent me a chart, which I will try and put in a packet.
Yeah, and it's roughly, I mean, 37 and a half.
It runs from 37 to 53.
Yeah. So we're at the top of the virtual schools.
This is one of those one-size-fits-all rules by DPI. We could hit with attendance on this, as well as graduation rates. And I reported last time that our real graduation rate is in the high 90% except the way it's counted by DPI. They make no exceptions for schools with high levels of diversity.
Bill, did you also want to mention a little bit about Flight Academy?
I want to mention the Flight Academy, held an end-of-year event earlier today to recognize the successful year. And that's all I put in here, what you're looking at. But I always have to take the opportunity, when something as wonderful as happened this morning happened, I am adding some notes to that. Barb and Karen and I attended this celebration this morning, and it was quite simply great. There were a lot of thank yous passed around to the staff, to administration, and to our board here. So I'm passing on a thank you from the staff and from the kids over there for letting this Flight Academy go forward. Several students shared their comments that were very encouraging about the year they've just had. This was our first year. Staff presented recognitions and awards. I don't have the full list. I tried to work from memory in putting this together, but suffice it to say, there are many awards. And I want to focus on the fact that these were not all internal awards. There were awards handed out to the kids internally for what they did well, but several outside of the range of our own school. The Six Flags program has a program, Read to Succeed. I don't know how you compete for this, but we had several dozen of our students recognized for their reading successes and progress. The Scholastic Corporation has a competition for students, for sixth graders and eighth graders. There's none for seventh graders. But our seventh grader says, to heck with that, we'll take the eighth grade tests. And they did, and they shined, shown, shined.
They excelled.
Nice substitute.
And our sixth graders on the sixth grade test did very well also. And there was a national math competition held for teams from 6,000 schools. Our schools completed in the highest 1%
Wow.
out of 6,000 schools, the Flight Academy team in math. So some wonderful successes that you can score there. And maybe the most impressive part of the morning was the enthusiasm of the kids and the parents that was displayed there. As one student pointed out, last September, they came into the room somewhat scared, unsure, and confused about what they had gotten into. Now they are quite simply a family, encouraging, sharing, teaching others. These dynamics are subjective, but seem to add tremendously to the achievement. An additional note, I've told, I've said before in this presentation time that Waukesha is beginning to be noticed by many others. The Flight Academy hosted approximately 700 people this year. What's going on there? So we have so much to be proud about, and I just wanted to share that to you, whether you wanted to hear it or not. Karen?
From around the world.
Yes, by the way, that's right. They had people, Finland?
Yes.
Finland, yeah. So we've had people coming from around the world to see what we're doing.
If I may add, Mr. Baumgart, it's a, the concept is a project-based school, and there's 60 students, 30 from sixth and 30 from seventh, and they're going to add 30 students next year, so I believe it'll be 90 students. And these kids work together on projects and have come up with some extremely innovative and creative ideas. And I was just so impressed with their enthusiasm and their amazement at what they could accomplish. So we can be very, very proud of what they've accomplished this year. And the teachers will be spending the summer coming up with a plan for next year. So let's keep our eyes on this wonderful program. And if you get a chance next year, please visit. It's something phenomenal that's going on.
Yeah, and we have some stars running that program, by the way.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, those kids, I got a little choked up when the one was talking about that this is a family, this is my family. And I thought, that's what we want, when we let our kids out the door if they're carpooling. But on the bus, they're gone for seven hours, whatever it is. And you just, you hope that they're okay, and that they're doing their best, their best, and they're going to fit in, and people will be kind to them. And for them to just smile and say, this is my family. And every single speech, every single kid that went up there just could not stop talking about their teachers. And they all would just stand up and cheer and clap. I mean, the love that they have for their teachers and each other, it really, truly, like, something happened this year. And when I was watching the program with all the pictures, it was like 15, 20 minutes of pictures of all the things that they did together, I was like, how can this get any better? Like, we are always thinking, and Ryan's always thinking, all right, 10 steps ahead. How, you know, what can we do different? How can we make this better? I was like, I can't see how this could get any better. And Bill, I think that we performed, I think, that we performed in the top 1% of the country, of the 6,000 schools, as, wasn't the seventh graders performing at the eighth grade?
No, that was the other test.
Okay.
But it was, that may have been, obviously, we were only putting seventh graders in because that's all we had, but, so you're right about that part.
Yeah, I was, I was right.
One last comment about this, and seeing that, and I know Barbara and Karen share this. We have created something over there, which these kids in two years will be going to high school. We have to make sure that we have something that challenges them equally. That's just the challenge. It's always ahead of us, so we'll do it.
That's true of our elementary STEM Academy too. And we created the middle school. And so we have some challenges, absolutely, but these are good challenges, right?
They're good challenges.
These are the challenges that we want. And so our hats are off to all the students, the teachers and administrators involved. And Butler is coming along with a similar kind of program. Different because it's site-based, but we look forward to seeing the results of Quest. So thank you for your report, Bill.
Sure.
Next, we're going to look at our CISA One contract. Every year, we outsource some of our services that we need to CISA One. And it's time to look at what that contract might look like for next year. Jen, do you want to take us through that?
Sure. This is an annual event, as Mr. Como was saying, with the CISA One, which is the Cooperative Educational Service Agency. It allows us to network and participate in collaborative supports, whether it be for teaching, learning, other networking, as well as perhaps some alternative programs and seats for those programs. It's a contract that we enter into, but again, if those seats aren't actualized, if we don't use them for some of the alternatives, it can be amended at any time as well. So it's been a very beneficial, the Innovation Network through CISA One, that's something we're known for participating in as well. So again, it encompasses far more services than just student services, but also curriculum instruction and other departments too.
Okay. And this is an action item tonight. I'd be looking for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the CISA contract as presented.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Brzing. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Pat Madden. Further discussion, comments? All right, Stacy, let's take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
William Baumgart. Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0, Stacy. We look forward to continuing to use CISA One for those important services that we can't deliver to our students. Next, we're moving on to our consent agenda. I'd like to first ask Lori Clifton if we had any gifts this month.
We do. We have two to report this evening. There was a thousand dollars that was donated to Hatfield Elementary School by Carol Montesanto. This gift will be divided equally among the health room, guidance, and social work departments for student needs. We also received four thousand dollars donated to Central Middle School by Paul and Kathleen Norman. This gift will be used to purchase technology for the math and science classrooms at Central.
Okay, thank you, Lori, and thank you to those people for those generous donations. And again, some of those people continue to give on a regular basis, and thank, thank you for your generosity. In the consent agenda, we have several items for your consideration, general disbursements, the May twenty-fourteen, twenty-fourteen payroll, student activities from our various high schools that we get reports on, and, and expulsions. I don't think we had any expulsions this last month, so. But we do have one scheduled for tomorrow, yes. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please so indicate at this time. Okay, seeing none. Steve Edlund will present the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved the seven resignations and sixteen contracts for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. This is in addition to the five resignations, two retirements, two leave of absence, and thirty-eight contracts approved at the June fourth Human Resources Committee meeting. This information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take the roll. Stacy?
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzynk.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. That passes nine zero, Stacy. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. First of all, I want to extend a big thanks to our entire staff for another great year. Obviously, we had some challenges this year, but we, we certainly made it through it, and I know everyone's looking forward to the end of the school year. Hang in, folks, twenty-four more hours with the kids, and then one more day of, of other work, and we'll, we'll be there. So, again, I appreciate everything everyone's done. Big congratulations also to the, our graduates at all four of our high schools. I know the, the traditional high schools will be graduating at two PM on Saturday. Good luck to those folks, and hopefully, each and every graduate that we have is able, is, is leaving with the Educa- Educational Foundation to do whatever they want in life, whenever they want to in life. We have been selected, we have seven schools that have been selected next year for the National Assessment of Educational Progress Testing, that's NAEP. You've seen that, that's an international test. The schools will be eighth grade at Butler, Central, Horning, Achev, and STEM, twelfth grade at North High School, and grade four at Rose Glen Elementary. We talked briefly about the charter school meeting that we'll be having on the eighteenth. Again, that information, the contracts will be coming to you in the Friday packet. Very few changes, and, and you probably won't see many changes, but we'll give separate pages of, of what those changes are. So, you're going to see very, very few, but it's something that does have to be done. And if there's any questions or concerns, that's the perfect time to, to answer those, and we can have some of the folks from the STEM schools available that evening. On another good note, talk about great timing, something we really, really needed in this community was last Friday night downtown. We, we, all the guitars that the students designed at all the schools were displayed at, at Friday Night Live. It was a very, very nice event, and once again, our, our students and our teachers showed why we have the best art program and music program in the state. They were just wonderful. They were really, really creative. Again, I want to thank Norm Bruce and Karen Reinacek for getting the guitars distributed out to the schools and making sure people were able to get those done by last Friday evening. At that event, the Gibson guitar folks and Guitar Town donated thirty acoustic guitars to the district. I was there to accept that award. I felt like a rock star with a guitar on stage, but unfortunately...
Did they have you play?
I was not allowed to play. I was not allowed to play. So, that was probably a good thing. But the, the, the group that was allowed to play was the South Strings folks, or the kids at Friday Night Live, absolutely fantastic. And they had the, by far, the largest crowd around them the whole evening. Now, they only played a couple songs, and people were kind of hoping for a lot more. So, I, I told the director, Courtney Gildersleeve, that next year, you got to have maybe four or five songs. But they were very, very popular, and I think we'll be seeing some more students down at Friday Night Live as the summer goes on. So, thanks to the students who participated, and thanks to Courtney Gildersleeve, who's really built a, a wonderful strings program itself, and it sure showed last Friday night, very, very impressive. And that's my report.
And she's worked very hard, very hard at bringing, bringing that back to Waukesha South. And, you know, as board members, we have a lot of responsibilities, and one of those is we get to participate in graduation. We have the honor to hand out diplomas, and, and most of us are going to make that this Saturday, one of those graduations. And that's probably the, the most pleasant, pleasant aspect of our, of our responsibilities. So, we look forward to that, and congratulations to all the students graduating.
Yeah, hopefully, the weather will be okay, and I'm saying, not so much rain, but not, you know, ninety degrees and humid, so.
Right, oh, we've, we've had a few of those. Ellen and Barb, you remember, one year, we, we just about passed out in Waukesha South, but, thank you, Todd. Thank you. We're going to move on to our committee reports at this time. Our first committee is finance and facilities, and they'll be presented by Kurt O'Brien. Kurt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several action items tonight. The first action item is approval of a request to rename Central Middle School. The district has received a request from the Les Paul Foundation to consider renaming Central Middle School as Les Paul Middle School. Administration has followed Board Policy ninety-six hundred and ninety-six hundred G that outlines a process for consideration of naming or renaming a school. Last month, at the board meeting, following a recommendation from the Finance and Facilities Committee, there was discussion concerning variations of the proposed renaming. Administration was directed to contact the foundation to see if they would support any of the alternative names, alternative names being considered. The committee was informed that the Les Paul Foundation would support either Les Paul Middle School or Les Paul Middle School Central Campus. The foundation would cover one hundred percent of all costs associated with the transition should the district choose to rename the school. The Finance Committee approved the request to rename Central Middle School to Les Paul Middle School Central Campus, and I so moved.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Pat Madden. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
I just wanted to recap, and I don't want to speak for any other board members, but we did have a considerable conversation at the board. You know, as one of the speakers said tonight, these are difficult decisions. Anytime you talk about naming the school, it's an important decision. But we did have significant discussion. I think you could see that board members researched this, put some thought into it, and I think all five votes were well-informed votes, and I was appreciative of the people that came that Monday night to, to voice their opinion on this situation, and also that they're here again tonight. So, I'd like to start it that way, and then open it up.
Ellen?
Thank you, and I'll, I'll try not to go too far over three minutes. But I, I do want to just start by kind of reiterating what I mentioned a month ago, which is that I was on the subcommittee as we first looked at this. I think that I have since been, my awareness has been really heightened of the importance of the legacy of Waukesha Union High School, and now called, you know, Central, by over a hundred, well over a hundred people, many of whom have called me. And I respect that legacy of Central. I also just want to mention, because in the paper and, you know, various comments, I do hear things about, "Well, Les Paul didn't graduate," but I think that troubles me a little bit. So, kind of as a side note, I just want to say, this was the early nineteen thirties, and there were a number of people, because of the Depression, that didn't graduate. So, I really don't want to hang that as an albatross around the poor man's neck, as far as that goes. But in terms of putting a sign up that renames the school, the reason I'm going to vote against it, or several, and I'll try to make this quick. I was with, over the weekend, a group of young adults who all went to Randall, as did my daughter, and we were talking about school names. And one of them said, "Well, why was Randall named Randall? They all went there for six or seven years." So, the fact that a sign outside of a school has somebody's name on it, clearly, I bet if we interviewed kids at Horning today or Butler, I bet they would have no clue what, okay, maybe one or two. So, I think what I'm looking for is something that's a little more substantive. The other thing, too, is a sign outside Central, if indeed this passes tonight, you know, might say what you suggested, Mr. O'Brien, but all the kids who come on buses, which is a good part of the Central, or when I drove a carpool of my kids, you don't go past that sign. Nobody goes in that door on Grand Avenue. So, the kids wouldn't even see the sign, because all the buses are on that side street, and all the kids go in and out. So, it seems to me that's a little bit of a hollow recognition in some ways, though perhaps it might have symbolic value, and I understand Sue Baker's point on that. But more to Sue Baker's point, and to our discussion on the committee that I was on, I would like to see us honor Les Paul and everything he achieved, which I know Mr. Edlund and I were just talking about this, was substantial, but in another way. I think that, you know, as you said, we have such a strong music program, and we're trying to, you know, rebuild it from a few hits it took. And I would really like to see something in terms of enrichment of our music, particularly instrumental music program, to be dedicated to him. One idea that's come forward to me is the students could give a concert every year dedicated to Les Paul, and people in the program could talk about what he, who, who he was and what he achieved. Maybe kids would know more about him that way than just if the sign was in front on Grand Avenue and they never even saw it. Or we could, in, 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 consider having some kind of a course in music technology. And as I was thinking about this and talking to someone today, you know, it would be a fascinating course for any of our students if we could put together the funding to do this. Music technology, you know, take it back to Bach and how he brought math into, you know, classical music, come forward to brass bands with all the technology of the brass instruments to guitars, and Les Paul, and all the way up to modern, and I can't pretend to tell you what the latest technology is today, but somebody suggested Moog synthesizers or something. But I think it would be a really interesting course, and also, we could dedicate that to him, and we could use funding to do that. I just think some of these things would have a lot more meaning for our students. So, I guess I'll conclude by saying, a sign outside the school, I just don't think is going to affect the kids in the school. I mean, we've seen that. Who the heck was Randall, they tell me? You know, they don't know. But if we do something that is, that enriches the lives of our students in our school, Central or others, and in our music program, then I'm very much in favor of it, because I think that's something that would really honor him in a much better way. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Langill.
Yep.
Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, when this subject first came up some time ago, you know, I maybe rather naively thought it would be a good idea, and it would be, the community would be standing behind it, and so on. I didn't have any specific feelings on, on, on the detailed issues about that, other than one, and that is that I really felt that this kind of a change, or whatever you want to call it, needed to be strongly supported. And as time has gone by, I have not seen that happen. I've seen the support to be significant against doing this, and it's, to me, that's been very important. It was brought up in some of the comments earlier, that, you know, where are those people? Well, I don't know where they are, because I, like everybody else, have received emails, personal contacts, all in the direction of, "This is not a good idea." And, and that's, that's where I am today, that this is not a good idea. We, we do not have universal community support to do this. Admittedly, we have seen an awful lot of support for Les Paul in other areas, and I don't, I don't deny that. I think it's wonderful. I, I think some of the things he did were very important and have been duly recognized. But I don't think that they are enough to, to make me feel that we should be changing the name of Central School at the opposition of a, a large part of our community. I do not have a direct tie to the Central's facility or the original high school, but I guess at this point, I would rather leave it the way it is. And I do, I felt too, that maybe there is another way that we can come along and use Les Paul in something within our music program. We don't need another building name for Les Paul, and again, I don't, I don't diminish what he did. I've got a family of musicians, several of which are tied up with things like guitars. So, what he did is important. You know, and I'm an engineer by degree, and I love people that can tinker and make things, make them work better, or whatever it is, that's important to me. So, he is a role model, but I do believe that we don't need to do that to Central Middle School to change it. So, that's where I sit today.
Mrs. Brzynk?
Thank you. I've listened very carefully to the voice of the public in this community. I've received phone calls, as everybody else has, letters, as everybody else has. When I met people at the store, et cetera, they asked, you know, to give consideration not to change in Central Middle School. I understand their sentiments, that the school means something to them, and I respect that that school is an important cornerstone of education in the Waukesha community. I feel that since I've been elected by these people to serve in this position, and since the voice of the opposition was the loudest and the clearest, and, and most of the people were in opposition, I have to support the voice of those people, and I cannot support the change of the name of Central Middle School.
Mr. Edlund?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be voting for this. With all due respect to the people that are here tonight, I sincerely appreciate all your comments and all your input. My concern is the education of the children in the Waukesha School District. You know, when they had the Guitar Town unveiling of the guitars this week, my favorite guitar, by far, was the Beatles guitar. The Beatles guitar was decorated by the students at Central Middle School. Paul McCartney said, "If it weren't for Les Paul, we wouldn't have rock and roll." So, how appropriate was it that they decorated a guitar after the Beatles? You know, when you talk about naming a building, I'm going to agree with Dr. Langill in, in the fact that most people don't, they can't connect with the name on a building. Part of the reason is, they, prior to, they, they didn't have the opportunity to go through that building, so they haven't developed the memories of that building. Many of the people who have been in opposition to this are preserving their memories. Okay? So, maybe they had an inspiration from Mr. Worthington, maybe they had an inspiration because, or, or memories of when it was Waukesha High School, or the Lincoln Building. But the students who are going through it now, the only attachment they have is the word "Central," which is named for a location. So, there's no inspiration there, none whatsoever. The word "Central" is a geographical location in the middle of a city. Les Paul, by, by the way, this recommendation is to keep that name in the name of the building. We are not going to remove Mr. Worthington's name. We are not going to remove the name "High School" off of one building, or "Junior High School" off another building. We're going to add a name to a building with this proposal. I, quite frankly, I, I, again, I'm going to agree with Dr. Langill that I have to really discount comments that I've heard, and I found them, quite frankly, to be a little offensive, to say that because Les Paul dropped out of school, we shouldn't be honoring this man. Okay, this was nineteen thirty-two, during the Depression. Waukesha was a cow town, okay? Quite frankly, we're in the middle of a farm, farm fields, and as such, there were many families that were struggling financially. Les Paul's family was one of them. His parents were divorced, and his mom was raising him on, as the story goes, fifteen dollars a month. Les Paul left, thanks to the teachers of the Waukesha School District, with the education that he needed to be an innovator, a successful man in the music world, and somebody who is more famous worldwide than any other person in the history of this city. He changed the world. He changed the world. Now, if you're saying that we shouldn't honor this man because his name's plastered around town, that's a city issue. We don't have anything in this school district named after Les Paul. And we're not doing this to name a building after Les Paul. We're doing this to inspire children in the Waukesha School District, the ones who will be going through that building. Was Les Paul a role model in his personal life? Probably not, but he was a man. A sinful man. A sinful man who loved children, who was a teacher, who taught others, a man who was an innovator. He was very successful. Imagine that, a high school dropout from Waukesha was successful. Today, he would have been identified by the teachers of this school district as somebody who was gifted and talented. He would have had an opportunity to participate in programs that were non-traditional. He didn't have that in 1932. Nobody did. We had to teach to the common denominator. I am in favor of this proposal for one reason, and for one reason only, to inspire the children in the Waukesha School District. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I wanted to let some of the other board members speak before I weighed in. And this was a difficult vote for me. Still is a difficult vote for me. I could see all the different points. I can understand the objections. And it helped a little bit at FNF when I, you know, Mr. Edlin actually, the presentation he gave at FNF was a lot of stuff I'd researched. And I was just thankful that he said what he said because he actually speaks much clearer than I do when he's communicating stuff, and it was quite helpful. You know, my youngest daughter, she didn't graduate from Waukesha when she left the school district. She graduated a year later after she left the school district. She went on to college and didn't actually graduate until a year later with the next graduating class. So she left a year before her other kids in her class. And she was prepared for the world by going through the Waukesha Public School System a year early. And she was very successful in school, engineering school, and did not have a problem competing with kids in that school with the one less year of schooling here in Waukesha than most of her classmates. And most of the classmates had 12 years of schooling that they went through. So the idea of graduating versus not graduating, I'd say if you're on the Wall of Fame, absolutely. There's a criteria there that I think graduating and being a graduate of Waukesha High, which is where we honor, or we, I think that's an honor to be on the Wall of Fame. I don't necessarily consider it an honor to have a school building named after you. I consider that in this, I consider that in the case of this particular case, more of a gift, an offering of a gift that we have the opportunity to accept or reject as a community or as a board. I don't think Les Paul would want to be honored. I don't think being honored is something that he strove, he looked for. We had a gift tonight, and we know that one of the donors doesn't really want to be recognized. They want to really more or less anonymously give. And I think the generation that spoke, that generation, it was certainly in that timeframe, I think most of the people, I think Paul mentioned, Mr. Reese mentioned his grandmother, they really aren't looking for recognition either. It's about giving back to the community, giving back to where you came from. And I think certainly, Les Paul was someone who liked to give back in his later years. And I think the offering of the gift, whether we accepted or rejected, was appropriate. Now, I look at, you know, many of the things Mr. Edlin said the other night and the fact that, you know, some of us are saying, "Well, jeez, there's a lot of opposition." One of my last 10 years on the board, there was a lot of opposition to us approving the last contract we approved with the teachers. And we voted eight to one despite 25, 30 people very angry and upset about that decision. But we knew it was the right decision. It was legally the right decision, and we knew with what we had achieved through the settlement of that contract, it was the right decision. And the only one vote in opposition is because there was a recognition of the opposition that night. It wasn't that that person was against the contract, it was just recognizing the opposition of that night. So when you're on a school board, you have to make tough decisions. You're making decisions for the district as a whole, sometimes with not any support at all being voiced to the board, even though we know it's the right decision. You know, and I do agree, this is a tough call. But when I understand what I would like to see and how our, how, what our history is for naming schools and buildings and things like this, I don't see where Central Middle School as a name fits into the history of the school district of Waukesha. It happens to be a name that someone came up with to preserve its relationship to the high schools at the time, when it was still part of the high school system. It's not really a name that's consistent with our middle schools, where we do assign names to. So historically, I can see where there's, if I'm looking at the historical and past practice, it is really right to consider naming our middle school after someone of prominence and that we can, that our students can look up to as an example of what they can achieve in life, whether they graduate from our high schools or not. I'm not going to try to paint any individual as good or bad. There's another good comment that came tonight, and I think we should, I really believe that if you're going to do something like this, you do this after someone passes, not before. I will state that I can travel the world, and if I mention one person from Waukesha that most people will likely know, it will be Les Paul. And it's not because he's an entertainer, it's because they know the accomplishments that he had, technology with solid ball guitar and multi-track recording. And, and, and when you, from a marketing point of view, from presenting our district in the best light, we look far better as a school district when we have Les Paul Middle School than we would as Central Middle School. And I kind of think about how we would be perceived if we said we'd rather have our building named Central, our school, middle school named Central versus Les Paul. I don't quite get that. And I understand some of the opposition. I think it's a lot the way Mr. Edlin, you know, it's about memories. But if someone came to me and asked me if, what would be named my own high school, I can tell you, I don't care what it's named. It was called Bennett County High School. They can change it to whatever they want to. I would still have the same memories. So I will be supporting this tonight as I was at FNF. I wasn't sure I would. I had to think it through. But I've researched it a lot, I've thought about it a lot, trying to understand, in fact, I even tried to call some people that I knew were in opposition, can get ahold of them, trying to understand the other side. I haven't really come up with a reason that says you should absolutely vote no on this. I come up with more reasons why you probably should absolutely vote yes on this.
Ms. Mann.
I guess I just have a couple small comments. Actually, I agree with Ellen. I think a program for learning of the different ways music has incorporated in our education and our life is, would be wonderful. And that would bring great significance to the sign out in front. Maybe those students would finally know what the name meant when they went to school. So that really had a pro for me. I'm going to vote yes. I think that people who don't care about the name change aren't here. It's, this is always the way. When you don't like something, you voice your opinion. If you look at the overall, how many people aren't here versus the number that have signed petitions been here, it's way the opposite direction. I represent everybody when I'm here as a school board member, not my own personal feelings and not a few, unfortunately, that oppose it. I have to look at the whole big picture, and that's why I will support it.
Ms. Reinichak.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I've heard your voices. I came to the FNF meeting and sat in the audience and wrote down all of, all of the things that you've said. I can tell you're speaking from your heart. So most of these, they're personal. They're personal reasons. I've looked at them and, and I, I have, it's all about the past. And I've thought, and I've talked to Todd about this, and I said, "What about Summit View? That's our school of the arts. Why wouldn't we name Summit View Les Paul Middle School, Les Paul Elementary School, or however it would be?" And he said, "But where are those kids going to go?" And I don't know if you guys have been over to Summit View. If you haven't, I just want to tell you something. When I went over there, someone said on Friday, or at the FNF meeting on Monday, "Education doesn't have anything to do with music." And if I'm not wording that exactly how you said it, paraphrasing it, I'm sorry. But you basically said, "Here's education and here's music." And I just want to tell you about the school of the arts. It is, when I went over there, they showed how math and music can help the kids so much. They take, they're having the kids write this sheet of music, and they're learning about whole notes and half notes and quarter notes and making music. And they have to know that there's only eight counts and they, and a bar, and they're learning all of that. But they're doing math, but they're having so much fun doing it, they're not even realizing, "Oh, I'm doing work." But that's just the basic. Now, if a child would be bored with that, then they can take it up a notch. And instead of just the piano, let's say they wrote music for the piano, now they can, they can write the accompaniment. And they can start writing a whole orchestra if they would like. It's music and, and education are definitely together. And I talked to Todd about, where are these kids going to go? What, are they just going to go to a middle school where they don't have the arts then? After they've, this has been so ingrained in their education through the visual arts, music, they're doing so many things over there, and I welcome you to go over there and see what they're doing. So maybe, we don't know this, but maybe by naming this a Les Paul Middle School, maybe it would be a school of the arts. Maybe this could, there could be something behind it. Unfortunately, we don't know that right now. We haven't heard that. But they definitely won't do it if we don't name it that. And I'm thinking of the kids, I'm absolutely thinking of the kids, my kids. The kids' voices aren't heard. I'm listening to all of your voices and you are being heard. But the kids don't really know how this could affect them. They don't know how this can affect their future if we change the name. And I know it's just a name on the building, and this is your passion right now, you're all here today. There were people lined up out the door to talk about AstroTurf for our football fields. There are people filling this room to talk about a name on a building. And we all have our different passions. Mine is when I got on this board three years ago, we had 75 homeless kids in Waukesha. The next year, we had 150. This year, we have 250. What is going on? There are so many different things that we can all be passionate about. The curriculum our kids are learning from A to Z, and I understand that this is your passion. And I, so I want you to know that I'm hearing you. But it's a name, it's a name on a building, and what we can do inside that building is what I'm passionate about, giving that opportunity to kids. I heard a story, well, I was just at my daughter's eighth grade ceremony, and my, I had this, this is Les Paul's visits to Waukesha, and all the things that I've been, I was just taking notes while I was watching the kids. And my mom saw this and she said, "Hey, they just, they," she has cable, and she said, "There were, they were selling a guitar, a Les Paul guitar, on Pawn Stars the other night, and it was worth $150 because Les Paul's name was on the back," or something like that. And I'm just like, people don't really realize what we have here. We have something, we have the best opportunity before us, and I can't imagine passing that up. I know I'm going to get, mix up this story, and I know it's not right, so look it up if you really want the details. But I heard that there was a tape from Hitler when he was spying during the war, and this tape that was used for spying, it had nothing to do with music. Les Paul somehow got this Hitler tape. And he took this tape and he said to Mary Ford, he said, "Mary, say one, two, three." And he took some clamp and did whatever he does, the inventor that he was. And she said, "One, two, three." And then he said, "All right, now say A, B, C." And she said, "A, B, C." And it was the first time two voices were ever recorded. Just things like that, that I, I hear stories about my kids, third grade, sixth grade, and eighth grade, and they come home and tell me stuff about school. And I think that's the same type of passion that's there. And these stories aren't being told because, because, I don't know, I don't know why. I know that this would help that. So I, I just want you to know, there's a lot of people that are going to be disappointed by our votes, and there's going to be a lot of people that will be happy with them. And it's, it's like every vote. You've got, we've got to weigh the options. And my heart is for the kids in the future, not about the past tonight. So, thank you.
Dr. Langill?
I could have heard Mr. McCaffrey first.
Mr. McCaffrey, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I voted against this at FNF primarily because I think that there's better ways to honor Les Paul. I mean, if you want to inspire somebody, a student, or you could do a scholarship, you could name a music program after Mr. Paul. Les was obviously an innovator, a man ahead of his time, a genius. I think that naming a school after him would be rather inappropriate for his memory. I feel that we do acknowledge Les Paul and his contributions in Waukesha, and I think that naming a school after a musician is not the right thing to do. I think that we could, if we were going to rename the school, we could name it after educator or somebody who contributed politically to Waukesha. So I will be voting against it again. I think that anybody who feels that the name of the school doesn't really matter because it's just a name on a building should also vote against it because it's just a name on the building. Thank you.
Dr. Langill?
Just very quickly, I think what you were talking about, Ms. Reinichak, is really apropos of what I was trying to propose, which is, you know, you put a name on a building, here's all the kids in the building, here's the name facing Grand Avenue. How does that impact them? It doesn't really. And I think that when you're talking about the passion we have for music and the appreciation of his contributions and the technology and the combination of technology and music in this subcommittee, that discussion got started and then it kind of stopped. And it ended up with the name. And what I fear is that if we put the name on a sign and we put it out there on Grand Avenue, even if it's a central campus, then that's it. We're done. Whereas I would really like to see us do something that does touch the students inside the building and does mean something to their education, their lives, and certainly appreciation for what he was. And it just seems to me that the gesture of putting his name on a sign not only wipes out some of the legacy of the history, but also might just be us, in a sense, washing our hands of what we could do that would have a lot more meaning and a lot more substance. So I agree with you, but our conclusions are different, I think. Thank you.
Ms. Edlin.
Yes, I'd like to remind the board that we were approached by the Les Paul Foundation to consider this primarily because Les Paul attended that school. So again, Ms. Reinichak, the reason that we're considering this building is because it was the building that Les Paul actually attended, the campus. We will call it the campus because there were three buildings there. I would also like to remind the board that the Les Paul Foundation has asked us to do something, to consider something, and that we followed all the procedures, and that anybody in our community, if they feel they want a building named after somebody that was a famous educator in the community or whatever, they can do the exact same thing that the Les Paul Foundation did. So we're not just doing this just because we feel we want to change the name on the building. We're not doing this just because we feel Les Paul is to be honored at this building, but because we were, it was requested of us to follow the policy, and therefore, we are here tonight following that policy. Having said that, there were a lot of great suggestions and a lot of discussion that came out of this, such as what Dr. Langill said came out of her committee, scholarships and things like that. I would be willing to bet came out of her committee, uh, scholarships and things like that. I would be willing to bet that if we changed the name of this building, that the Les Paul Foundation, um, would probably be very interested in following up in the Waukesha School District with other potential gifts to the school district. I wouldn't want to stare a gift horse in the mouth, um, but there's always that potential to continue that ongoing relationship. Gibson Guitar is in its third year, which is unprecedented for them, in the Guitar Town, uh, program which they have, which, by the way, raised an awful lot of money for our music programs in the Waukesha School District. Um, and we're very grateful to the Gibson Guitar Company for those contributions, and all the work that's gone into those guitars. So, um, you know, Waukesha's kind of rebranding itself. And again, I don't, I'm not interested in renaming this building to rebrand the district, to, you know, whatever, for the commercial aspects. I couldn't care less. That's not, that's not my yes vote. My yes vote, again, is to enhance innovation, creativity, music programs in the Waukesha School District. And I believe that, I, I'm a firm believer, I have to believe in my heart, that the Les Paul Foundation is going to stick with us going forward. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
And, uh, just because, you know, it's been brought up a number of times. Look, it, when it comes to expanding offerings for children that may or may not be related to Les Paul, why would we restrict that to Central Middle School? Why not the other two middle schools? I mean, it would be, i- i- well, well, but what I'm saying in my mind is, it seems like we're trying to create something that is a hypothetical, that would not, if we could already have done it, we would have done it, because we're, the, there are budget constraints. So, an alternative that somehow we could come up with that, and I'm not looking to honor anyone, I'm trying to figure out where the real added value is, and what the implications are, um, for changing the name. And I wasn't here at the previous FNF or the previous board meeting, but my understanding was, is that we tried to preserve the history by the compromise of the central campus, which the committee considered and accepted. So, we tried to find a compromised position, and we came back, and basically, the vote has been, because I wasn't at the first meeting, but it's been eight to one, because I believe the first time it was four zero or whatever. It, it's, there's been strong support on the board by following the process, by looking at all the things, um, for what we're, what's been motioned tonight. And I just don't see the history of the board, this his, history of our budget constraints, I don't see something falling out of the sky that's going to create all these new programs that's going to honor Les Paul. I, I just don't see that. I, I see it possible through a continued, um, through a continued, uh, outpouring of support for Waukesha with Les Paul Middle School, and supporting our entire music programs across the district, not just from, but we're not doing this for money. We're doing it because there's an opportunity to, I ha- I think it helps inspire our kids. I'll agree, a name on a building doesn't mean that much, okay? Um, but it means, it means something to some people. We have the Randall Campus and the Saratoga Campus because it meant something to some people, and we preserved that. We did that again, in this case, by holding on to the central campus. But, we've added, to me, something that's significant for a world-recognized figure that's not just an entertainer. Not just, he, he's in the Hall of Fame of inventors. I mean, he, he really accomplished a great deal. And that's the type of thing that we want our kids in the middle schools to look up to.
I'm going to take a few minutes, uh, to, Mr. McCaffrey?
Just one quick comment, thank you, Ms., Mr. President. Um, to Mr. Edlund's point about inspiring students, I think that, um, student inspiration happens in the classroom with teachers and not, um, from a sign out in front of the building. That the only people that we'll see are the ones walking down the block.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to take a few minutes to weigh in on this matter. Um, first of all, I'd like to let you know that I still am in favor of this after hearing, hearing the debate tonight and listening to the comments. Um, let me start by s- uh, first of all, separating the decisions here. Um, decision to name a school, for me, to me, is completely separate from asking for funding or try to look for funding for other programs. I think we should do that. I think that's appropriate. But tonight, for me, the decision is strictly based upon, uh, should we name a school after Les Paul, and not whether or not we can, um, attain more funding to grow our schools in whatever capacity, and our, educate our children in whatever capacity. At our last meeting, um, I believe, full board meeting, um, as Mr. O'Brien pointed out, um, there was an olive branch, I guess, uh, uh, that was given, uh, to still at least maintain the name and some of the heritage, the remembrance of, um, Central Middle School by adding Central Campus on the end of Les Paul Middle School. And to me, I'm still in favor of this, and, and, and what I believe, the new name of Les Paul Middle School and Central Campus, what it does is bridge the past to the future. As you've heard me say, um, before, our focus right now is developing students who can go into this century, the twenty-first century, prepared to work for employers, to continue their higher education, to, to build whatever dreams that they want to build. And part of that, part of being prepared for that is being creative and being innovative. Those are important aspects of being prepared for today's world. And this is, these are difficult things, I think, to, to teach and learn. As I pointed out too in the past, I believe that Mr. Paul was a lifelong learner, and he continued throughout his life to learn and improve, and to question, to be inquisitive. That's something else that's really important to teach our, our, our children. So, for me, he's very inspirational. I, I believe that when I take a step back, the first, the first question I, I have to ask in naming s- a, a school after someone, are they worthy of it? Did they accomplish enough in their lifetime? And from my perspective, absolutely yes. He's, he's, he's done a tremendous amount with, with his life, and it's been inspiring. And he's influenced each and every one of us. And if you beli- if you don't believe he's influenced each and every one, one of us, I think you got to go out and start to Google, and, and find out how you can relate to how he's influenced all of us, because he has. And he has changed the world. So, for me, the name is appropriate. It does bridge the future with the past. And, and that's why I'm, I'm in favor of changing this, this, uh, Central Middle School, to be changed to Les Paul Middle School, Central Campus. Other comments, questions? Mr. Edlund?
Like to call the vote, please.
Okay. Okay, Stacy, um, will you please call the roll?
Karen Reinichuk?
Aye.
Ellen? Ellen Langel?
No.
Patricia Madden?
Yes.
William Baumgart?
No.
Barbara Brizink?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
No.
Steve Edlund?
Yes.
Joe Como?
Yes. Stacy passes, uh, five-four. Thank you, everyone, for your debate and your comments, and, um, we will be changing Central Middle School to Les Paul Middle School, Central Campus. Mr. Edlund?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, when is that? Um, I, I know that the Les Paul Foundation wanted this to be in, in harmony with Les Paul's hundredth birthday. Um, do we have a, a date set for any sort of signage and renaming?
I think, I think that was premature, because we weren't sure if we were going to change the, the name yet or not. Uh, Mr., Mr. Gray, have you given any thought to that?
No, I mean, up until this moment, uh, there was no clear indication that there would be a change, so we'll have to, uh, move on that pretty quickly.
Well, we have till June ninth, twenty fifteen, when that's his hundredth, uh, hundredth birthday, so we'll work the details out.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, uh, continuing with the Finance and Facilities Committee?
Yeah, I had to, I had to find my notes, and I'm back to it now. Still trying to fit in here. Uh, the section at, second action item was approval of a resolution authorizing and approving an equipment schedule to the master lease purchase agreement with Apple Incorporated. As we continue with the implementation of Waukesha One, we are ready to provide the funding for wave three student devices and the final wave of teacher devices. There will be one more lease scheduled for next year to roll out the final student devices. The lease being proposed this evening is for student and staff devices totaling two million, five hundred and four thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents, with three annual payments of eight hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine, and nine cents, beginning in July, two thousand and fourteen, at an annual interest rate of point nine percent, with a one-dollar buyout at the end of the agreement. The new lease agreement follows the same structure as the master lease that the district entered into with Apple Inc. in June, two thousand and twelve, and is considered an additional schedule to that original lease. The Finance Committee approved the resolution authorizing and approving equipment scheduled number three to the master lease purchase agreement with Apple Inc., and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion, questions? Okay, let's take a roll call vote.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brizink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinichuk?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. It passes nine-zero to approve the, uh, equipment schedule and purchase agreement as presented. Mr. O'Brien?
Guess that goes to prove that some votes aren't so hard. Third action item, approval of two thousand and thirteen, fourteen budget transfers and amendments. The committee was presented with the budget changes that have been made since December, two thousand and thirteen. A combination of transfers and amendments were presented for approval. The Finance Committee approved the budget transfers and amendments as presented, and I so move.
There's a motion. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Ms. Madden. Comments, questions? Okay, so we're looking at approving the budget transfers and, and amendments as presented. Stacy, will you take that roll call vote?
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Karen Reinichuk?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brizink?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. It passes nine-zero. Stacy, Kurt?
Boy, we're on a roll here. Let's see if we can keep it going. Yeah. Approval of health insurance plan design changes. The committee was presented with plan design changes to our health insurance plan that would go into effect on July first, two thousand and fourteen. The beginning of a new plan year. The proposed changes would increase the co-pay for office visits from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars for a primary care physician, and to fifty dollars for a specialist, and would also create a hundred-dollar co-pay per prescri- prescription fill for certain specialty drugs. The purpose of the changes is to keep the plan premiums affordable to the district and its employees. The design changes allow the plan to absorb the new federal taxes mandated under the Affordable Care Act, and still provide a two percent reduction in premiums. The Act assesses taxes or fees of sixty-five dollars per member can, covered by the plan, and is slated to expire after three years. There are additional plan design changes that will be brought forth through the following year to address other regulations that are to be implemented for two thousand and fifteen. The committee approved the plan design changes as presented, and I so move.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion, questions? Mr. Edlund?
I had a question for administration. Have we had an opinion by corporate counsel on the, uh, fee that, uh, the tax that is going to be charged to us by the Affordable Care, Affordable Care Act? On employee benefits?
Did you want to take that, or, or Lori?
Lori, Lori was checking on that.
In, in what way are you looking for an opinion?
Whether we can double, create double taxation.
They didn't give us a definitive answer.
Okay.
Um, the, the question that we asked is, can it be passed on to the individual? They thought there might be some discrimination if we charged per family member, discreetly per member of the plan. So, they thought we would have to, um, do a generalization.
Okay, that's not the question that I was asking to be answered by corporate counsel. The fact that the Obama Administration and the Affordable Care Act has implemented a new tax, um, which is to be paid by everybody that's enrolled in a health insurance plan, um, and filed with the IRS on a form that is called a tax form, um, results in a cost to this district of two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars annually for the next three years. That tax is to be paid for by, and, in this proposal, is to be paid for by the taxpayers. So, in essence, we are creating double taxation. We are collecting taxes from local taxpayers, and the state of Wisconsin, um, in order to fund our system of education, and roughly eighty percent of our revenue goes towards employee pay and benefits. Uh, the benefits are being taxed by the federal government, and the taxpayers will be paying that federal tax. So, I don't know, I don't know if what we're doing is legal. I don't know if there's a precedent for it in case law. I have no idea. I have no clue. And, you know, because I don't have my questions answered, um, I'm going to vote no for this. And, you know, I, I think we're opening up for the potential of, of, uh, a challenge on this.
Dr. Langel?
Thank you. Um, I understand your point, Stephen. I know you brought it up at HR, and we looked at it then as well. Um, but I think that this motion, if I understand it, and you can correct me, Mr. O'Brien, is that we are looking as a district at, uh, three areas in which we will, um, use our own health plan, in terms of, um, actually increasing a co-pay, basically, in three areas, which I don't think pertains, in terms of our motion, to the question you're raising. So, unless I'm in error there, I don't see that in this motion at all.
Mr. O'Brien?
Well, I, I think I, I, to be fair, I, I, I do, I do agree that when you're talking about changing the plan and it involves this fee or tax, um, the legislation says fee. Um, the Supreme Court refers to these types of things as taxes, and it's spelled out on a tax form. So, uh, I think if we took it to court and we wanted to sue over it, we could probably get a ruling that it's a tax, but the legislation says fee. So, I, I could, I could agree with, um, you know, Mr. Edlund bringing it up as a point, uh, to consider before we approve this, that, um, that either we're feing or taxing to cover something as part of the plan, and we're being asked to approve the plan as a whole. And, um, so I, I don't disagree with his, um, concern about it, uh, in terms of him willing to bring it up. I don't agree with necessarily with his opinion on it, that we need to, that we are exposing ourselves as some sort of legal liability or double taxation, because it is called a fee, and no court has yet ruled it otherwise specific to this particular thing. So, um, and it's being treated by a fee by everybody else. As we explained during FNF, it's a pool you collect for insurance as a pool. You don't really try to individualize it out, and that's how we're collecting it, and it's the most efficient way of collecting it. Um, but I do agree that it, uh, with Mr. Edlund, in terms of him bringing this up as a point of consideration in the process, so.
Ms. Edlund?
I'd like to just clarify, the reason that I bring this up is because it is a brand-new tax on benefits that has never existed before. Uh, so this is something that is not status quo, and in my HR report, I'll explain that a little bit more. Um, but what we're approving here is how we're going to fund that, that tax. And we're going to fund it with our health plan, which is an employee benefit. So, we're, we're using revenue from the district, taxpayer revenue, to fund our health plan and to pay for this tax. So, the reason I'm bringing this up is this is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that is coming from within our budget.
Ms. Madden?
I agree with Mr. Edlund. However, we had our insurance, uh, company at the, our meeting, and they said every other employer is paying this tax. Right now, it's a three-year tax in the Affordable... Right now, it's a three-year tax in the Affordable Healthcare Act. It's a new tax. It goes to a corporation. It's figured in the premium. So we will have to go out on new bids if we want to take the money out of this and hold that whole thing up, and then assess our employees. We're going to be the only entity that is going to do this. And that's why, and then you put a double tax on the employee by making them pay this. And it's not a $63 per enrollee, it's per enrollee and their family. So that could be extremely costly to a husband, wife, and four or five children, in addition to what they'd be paying for their health insurance. That's why everybody accepted that, yes, we don't like it, it's part of the new Affordable Healthcare Act, it's a three-year tax at this time, and nobody else is, even though they're questioning it, they're doing it. And that's why we have gone along with it.
Mr. Edlund?
That's a good point. Why isn't anybody questioning this? I think probably it's because it's being called a fee by the administration, and I'm going to be real blunt about this. We know that the President has not been truthful with the American people about the American, about the Affordable Care Act.
I think that's a...
That's out of order.
No.
Appropriate or not, it's the truth.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this? Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I think, again, I think it's appropriate to bring it up, and I felt it was appropriate to bring it up at FNF, and I also feel it's appropriate for board members to, you know, to raise their objections. I think the basis for the objection was legitimate, is a legitimate concern. I just don't agree with it. And I don't see the district as being the ones that are paying a tax, per se. I believe it's fair to call it a tax, even though it's labeled as a fee. And yes, it's labeled as a fee because no one wants to raise taxes. Okay, that's the reality of things. But we are collecting the cost of this from the employees through the redesign of the plan. It's not a double taxation on our taxpayers, per se, which I'm sure we would be very uncomfortable with as a board. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Mrs. Brizink?
So what you're saying, Mr. O'Brien, is that because we have raised the insurance premium, that really the employees are paying for it?
Yes, the employees are paying for it by, and through plan design changes, we've been able to mitigate the cost impact to the employees. And that's part of what we're trying to do across the board with our healthcare plan over time, is continuing to lower the cost impact from wherever it comes from, whether it's the Obamacare, Affordable Care Act, whatever we want to call it, or from increased costs in healthcare. We've been working hard since we started bidding out our healthcare, which the union agreed to some time back, and we were able to do. It's given us some headwind, or a tailwind, I should say, some tailwind to lower our cost. That's been very helpful to this district, and this is just another, I want to commend the administration for coming up with a good way of trying to mitigate the impact financially on our employees.
Mr. McCaffrey?
I agree with Mr. Edlund, and I think everybody does, that we don't want our employees to be burdened with any sort of fees or taxes. However, I think it would take an act of Congress to change it, because it is in the law. There's a bunch of stuff in that law that is going to come out here in the next couple of years that's going to affect our employees, much more than $63. So my concern is mitigating the burden on our employees. The design changes to the plan will mitigate the money that we're collecting, but when it comes right down to it, costs are always passed along, whether it's in government or in the private sector. So I think that you were right in bringing it up, Steve, but the law is the law, unfortunately, and we have to abide by it. And that's when it's going to change, if the law changes.
Mr. Edlund?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to believe that the fees that are being raised here are going to cover this $227,000. But as we kind of questioned at FNF on the fee structure, there's been no actuarial study or case history on, or rhyme and reason to raising these amounts, other than a recommendation by Benico. So we, we're not going to track this to find out if it's going to cover the $227,000, nor are we going to, you know, the fact that we're implementing a brand-new healthcare system with our shared clinic, I think is going to actually have an impact on the ability to be able to raise that 25 and that $50, because people are going to go to the clinic for free. So I think if we're trying to base this on $227,000 that's coming from plan change, there's nothing solid behind that that's been shown to FNF on that dollar amount or the structure of the fees. So I, I'm sorry, but I just don't really consider that to be an appropriate argument for the way this fee structure is set up. Thank you.
Okay, so what we have before us is a motion to approve plan design changes as presented. As Mr. O'Brien brought up, we have, for a number of years, been trying to position ourselves as best as we can to have great, great benefits, but still have them be affordable. We continue to make strides towards that. This is one more step in the plan that we had last year. We started our self-insurance, and that has gone extremely well. These plan design changes are one more step towards potentially offering options to our employees where there are no options, some lower cost, more cost-effective options. And we also have a goal, this board has a goal, of making sure that we avoid the Cadillac tax that's potentially upon us in 2018. So these plan, these plan changes help us take a step towards that, as we consider healthcare for the future. So this time, we'd like to, Stacy, have you call the roll call vote?
Barbara Brizink?
Yes.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinichuk?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
No.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
It passes seven two, Stacy. Mr. Kurt, or Mr. O'Brien, you have a couple of information.
Whoever I am tonight.
Can I call you Mr. Kurt?
Yeah.
You're still at least the mister with the respect.
I've been called lots of things. That's okay. Okay, on to informational items. That concludes our action items for tonight. The monthly budget report, the committee received the monthly budget report for activity through May 2014. $1,420, excuse me, even in big print, I struggle. $428,306 was reported in general fund revenue, and $9,485,502 was expended during the month. $263,839 was reported in special education revenue, and $2,421,170 was expended. The district is operating in accordance of our budget projection for the year. Eighty-one percent of the taxes levied for this year have been collected. Information item number two, 2013-14 membership audit results. Ms. Clifton updated the committee on the results of the 2013-14 membership audit that was completed in May 2014. We did find some, we were made aware of some irregularities that had some procedural issues that came to light. The findings were discussed, as well as the procedure changes that will be implemented going forward to prevent it happening in the future. I have no discussion items tonight. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, or Mr. Kurt, I guess. Okay, our second committee report is Curriculum Instruction, presented by Mrs. Barbara Brizink.
Ms. Barbara. Our Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 3rd, at six o'clock. We do not have any items appearing on the agenda this evening. However, we would like to take a few minutes to thank the library media specialists, Joe Wagner and Margaret Ottenad, for their presentation on the top 10 things you may or may not know about your library media centers. Additionally, Debbie Boy Wilgus and her French students for reporting back to us after their travels to Chartre, France over the spring break. And I'd also like to inform you that on Monday, there was a meeting between myself as a CNI Chair and the CNI administration, and we have cast a plan for our agendas for next year. And there's a lot of interesting things that we're going to be, issues that we're going to be dealing with, and we're looking forward to that. Thank you, Mr. President, and this concludes the Curriculum and Instruction Committee report. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 5th, 2014. There will be no July CNI meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brizink, or AKA Ms. Barbara.
Mr. Kurt.
We started a trend here. We'll move on to Human Resource Committee report, given by Mr. Steve Edlund.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two action items this evening. Review and approval of the employee handbook. The original, the handbook originally approved in June of 2012, provided provisions for all employees and teachers. A supplement was approved on July 17th, 2013, that made some changes and incorporated some staff, some support staff provisions. The updated handbook for approval in June 2014 will incorporate the support staff section. The Board of Education received a revised handbook on May 2nd of 2014. Employees were provided with an electronic version of the handbook on May 5th, 2014. Listening sessions were held the week of May 12th to allow employees to provide feedback on the handbook revisions. A copy of the feedback is provided. Based on the feedback, additional changes were made to the handbook, which are highlighted in the copy enclosed in the packet. We provided in your packets a redlined version to show changes that have occurred since May 2nd, based on feedback received from employees. Mr. President, I move to approve the employee handbook as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Dr. Langill? Mrs. Brizink?
Just a couple of things, just not drastically important, but, Chris, on page one, where we have the circle listed with all of the topics that relay our values, I have mentioned this time and time again, I find that a very big piece is missing there, and that none of this can happen without relationships. So I think that, I would appreciate if consideration could be given to adding the word "relationships", because none of that could happen without relationships. And then I also would like to say that, I guess I thought I was supposed to read the whole book, so I spent three hours last night and read the entire handbook, and I want to compliment you, Chris, and the committee for the hard work that you have put into this. I think it's very, very, very well done, and spells out very, very clearly what is expected of staff, et cetera. However, I just would like to make a comment on the teacher evaluation system that's called educator effectiveness. And it's a very, very complex process, and as a former principal, I would find this to be very, very complex and very difficult for me to conduct these, because it's going to take one solid school year to do one person. So if you've got 15 people or more, and I used to certainly, I used to have 50, it would be, it would really interfere with a lot of the other important things that a principal has to do. But that's just a personal opinion, and I'm sure you and I, you know, would agree that this is very complex. But this comes from DPI, and there's really not much we can do about it. But I'm sure that once this goes out to all the school districts in the state, that there's going to be, we're going to hear a lot about this.
Actually, they have, I mean, they've been, everyone's been working on it.
Yeah, I know everyone's been working on it.
Some have different degrees of how much they like it or don't like it.
Right, right.
But I mean, it is, everyone in the state has to be working on it at this point, so...
Right, right. And we're lucky that we did a pilot this year, because we're ready to roll for next year. We've, you know, probably had an opportunity to try it and iron out some wrinkles in it, but wow, this is very, very complex, when you think each teacher that you have to evaluate, and I'm assuming we're not going to have them on cycles anymore, is that correct? Everyone, every year gets evaluated?
No.
We're going to have them on three-year cycles?
Everyone, every year will create a professional practice goal and a student learning outcome.
Okay.
But they're still on the every third cycle for that intensive evaluation, except for a brand-new, for teachers that are new to the district.
Okay.
And you're right, it is a very complex process, and we needed a whole year to get through that cycle, and the DPI has already made some changes based on the experiences from this pilot year.
Sure, sure.
So you're right about that. I also want to mention, too, I appreciate the compliments and putting this together, but Stacy Coschmidt, who's here tonight filling in for Sue, anyway, she's our, she works in our office part-time, and she handles projects, so she's the one that really kept all of this going, and so I really have to compliment her, especially when you get down to the nitty-gritty of numbering and table of contents, it just can drive you crazy. So thank you, Stacy.
Thanks.
That's why she's crazy.
Well, thank you, anyway, for allowing my comments, because, I mean, this just, you know, I saw this through the eyes of an evaluator, former principal, so it's pretty intense.
Other discussion or comments? Mr. Edlund?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Brizink, are you, I guess in your first comment that you had, are you making a friendly amendment to adopt the document as presented?
Well, I think we will adopt the document as presented. No, I was not making a motion to adopt the document.
Okay, it was a suggestion, but Chris would have to, you know, this is the final draft, so she would have, if it's a final draft, which is a living document, it's going to continue to evolve.
Right, right, right. No, I was not suggesting any change.
Very good.
Because if we can't change that, that was a DPI thing, so, thank you, Mr. Edlund.
I would also like to thank Ms. Headstrom and her staff for the amount of work that they put into this, because this has been ongoing for three years. I believe it's three years, close to it? And I made the comment to her after the meeting, and it wasn't meant to be disrespectful at all, but we've gone from a 30-some-page union contract to a 60-page document, but it is, as Ms. Headstrom appropriately pointed out, a consolidated document covering all of our employees under one cover. So you have to cover everything with every different level and type of job description that we have within the district, and some of them are particular to a particular occupation, so that's why it's 60 pages thick.
Yeah, you're correct, Mr. Edlund, that it does cover all employees now, and as you recall, three years ago, when we first started this process, we had multiple contracts with different groups of employees, five or six?
Something like that.
Five or six, I don't recall. So this essentially replaces the majority of that contract language in those five or six contracts, and I believe the teacher contract was roughly 70 pages alone, and then there were five other contracts. So it covers a lot of ground, and as you know, Act 10 still allows base wage to be negotiated, so. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the employee handbook as presented. Will you take the roll call vote on that, Stacy?
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Karen Reinichuk?
Aye.
Barbara Brizink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. It passes nine zero, Stacy. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. The second action item we have this evening is the approval of the recommended candidate for principal of Hadfield Elementary School. The administration is recommending Mr. Robert Blessington for the position of principal of Hadfield Elementary School. Mr. Robert Blessington shows a strong investment in meeting the needs of students from diverse backgrounds. He's highly skilled in developing rapport with students of all ages and backgrounds. Similarly, he shows a high level of success in developing positive rapport with staff and parents. He seeks leadership opportunities as a means to positively impact the work of teachers and to impact the lives of more children by developing strong teachers. His life speaks to an exceptional drive to make contributions to education, to the education of students, to the lives of students, and to the organizations with which he is associated. Mr. Blessington has been an assistant principal at Waukesha North High School since July of 2008. Prior to coming to Waukesha, he was a teacher and a teacher leader for Sussex-Hamilton, Wisconsin schools, and in California. He has taught at the elementary and middle school levels. He has coached, he has coached at middle and high school levels. In California, he worked with multi- In California, he worked with multicultural settings in which a high portion of parents and students spoke limited or no English. He participated in district-level technology committees throughout his teaching experiences, and provided leadership in the implementation of Waukesha One Initiative at North High School. He has acquired leadership experience in the role of summer school, as a summer school principal. He possesses a BS in elementary education and special education, and special education from University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. He has a MA in education from California State University, and an MA in exceptional leadership from Marion College. A confident recommendation and resume were included in your May 30 board packet. Salary and benefits will be according to middle, middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Robert Blessington for the position of principal of Hadfield Elementary School.
Is there a second, Mr. Baumgart? Okay, further discussion, comments? Mr. Baumgart?
I have a comment. In the past, a couple of times, I've gone off on how inadequate some of the resumes are that we see, where they just list the duties that they have, or the tasks they were supposed to perform. And I wanted to comment, this is what I'm talking about in terms of a good way to write a resume. I mean, Bob tells us what he did, and what he got done in each of those positions. And that's the way I like to see it. I mean, he uses the words created, managed, served, and so on, and that's, that's what I think we should be looking for when we see somebody coming for an administrative position, that they did things, not that they just were supposed to do things.
That's fine.
That's my rant.
That's short, right?
Maybe the end of it.
Other comments? Questions?
I would just like to add, Bob and I came at the same time, and he's just done a wonderful job for us. The only issue I see is we're going to have to change the, the door heights at campus. I, I would like to say he is the tallest elementary principal I've ever worked with, but in Appleton, I had one that was about an inch taller.
Oh, really?
So, so height has, we'll, we'll have no bearing on it. But I think Bob will do a wonderful job at Hadfield. He's really grown and, and showing his leadership skills here.
You stole my thunder. Now I had to think of a second one, so I guess I'm going to have to say I, I always look up to Mr. Blessington.
Okay.
I was going to suggest we give him a hard hat, so he doesn't hit his head on us.
In, in all sincerity, it's been a pleasure to watch Mr. Blessington grow in his position at North. He has earned this. I believe he will be a fantastic match for, for Hadfield, given his background and his experience. So I, you know, if we pass this, I, I think he's going to be a fantastic match, so. With, Mr. Edlund?
You know, from a personal note, I don't think you could find a nicer gentleman. And, you know, from walking down the corridors and, and children having to look up to him, they'll be able to see him at the end of the corridor, not have to look very far. I think the children will, will command a lot of respect.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm looking forward to this position appointment. Thank you.
Ms. Reinacek?
Oh, I just wanted to say, my son, my youngest, is Mrs. Blessington, that's his teacher. And he just said, the other day, I accidentally called her Ms. Kliszewski, and he's like, "Oh, Mom." And I'm like, "I mean, Mrs. Blessington." And he's like, "Oh, Mom, don't worry, she's been doing it for," and then he said her age years. And so I thought to myself, I'm like, "She must have called herself Mrs. Kliszewski a few times," and then, yeah, but now everyone knows her age, but I won't say that now. But they're a great, great, great couple, and he's a wonderful guy, so he's going to do great there.
Okay, Stacy, why don't we take the, the vote on approving Mr. Blessington as the principal of Hadfield Elementary School?
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
It passes nine-zero. Information items, Steve?
Thank you. Last information item, and this one will probably be short, because we've pretty much covered it already. The Human Resources Committee met on June 4th, 2014, discussed and take action on taxes and fees on employee benefits. There was a motion made to have district employees incur the expense of the additional fees or taxes of sixty-three dollars per person for insurance costs outlined on the Affordable Care Act. There was no second to the motion. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edlund. Policy Committee, presented by Ms. Madden?
We have not met, so I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Technology Committee, presented by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening. However, we will have a meeting on June 23rd at 6:30 PM in room 109.
Okay. And we don't have any other business? Do we have a need for an executive?
It's not noticed, so.
I, I know there's no agendized other business, but I, I do have a question of Mr. Gray, because on our desk, of course, is the concerns. And I wondered if you could tell us when this consideration committee will be meeting, because with the sort of removal, as you're saying, of this book, which I'm not disagreeing with, because it sort of looks to me like it's under protective custody at this point. But also, it says that you've notified us here that the removal has occurred, and I assume it's temporary pending, consideration committee and submission to the board under our 6161G guidelines. How will that go forward, and what do you see as the timing?
I, I don't, I, once I get the, the formal, I'm, I'm told a formal complaint is coming. Once I have that, I'll better know what.
But it says, your order will include that there's been a request for consideration, so therefore the.
I was, I was, again, I was told that there is one coming, so.
Okay, because it looks like it's pro forma, as, as part of the removal, that there will be consideration. What if there is no formal complaint coming? It still gets considered, right?
I'll, yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't have a timeline.
Okay.
I, I just, this, last week, I've not been able to.
No, I know you, I don't deny that you're busy.
Yeah.
I don't deny this is sensitive, but it certainly came up at CNI, and it's here in front of us, and it's a concern, not that I'm going to argue for or against this book, I'm not.
Yeah.
But I do want to see our process play out as soon as possible.
It'll, it'll occur this summer, but I don't have an exact.
Okay, so you see this as a summer timeline?
I have to name a committee, and I, again, the, the issue just came up in the last two days, so.
No, and I'm not, I'm not really complaining or criticizing you. I'm just saying, I'm assuming that this book, at this point, is in some office under protective custody, pending.
I, I can't, I can't answer that, yeah.
You don't know where the book is? It's out of the library.
There's multiple copies.
They're all gone, though?
I, again, I, I've not had a chance to.
This isn't agendized.
Well, it's a discussion item, it only has to be agendized if it's action. And it says new other business, and I just think, because it was on our desk, I just have questions on it. So you've spoken to it, and I just wondered, you know, we'll hear more about that.
I, I, yeah, I'll, more detail in the Friday packet.
Okay, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, different subject, and it, one of the things that on the agenda, we usually agendize a closed session, just in case someone wants to pull something out from the consent agenda, and it wasn't on, I don't think we had a closed session agendized.
You are correct.
And if, in the future, I think we should. We, we usually have agendized provisions for a closed session, in case someone wants to pull something out of the consent agenda, and it can be anything. Like, one time, we had a donation at, to someone.
No, you, you can't, you can't do that anymore. No, you have to, you have to specific, a closed session has to be very specific about what you are going into, and has to be noticed before the meeting now.
So then how could we technically, this is a, I guess, a parliamentary procedure that we would have to investigate. To, to Kurt's question, if we did have, during our consent agenda, have an item come up that should be considered separately?
In closed session.
In closed session.
You, you would have to wait to another meeting, or, it has to be pre-notice now. The notice has to be very specific prior to the meeting on, on what you're going in a closed session for. And that is directly from Brad Schimmel.
Oh, okay.
Right. You'll have to turn it, and then the next month, put it on as a closed session.
Mr. O'Brien?
I think we need to do more research on this, because when it comes to expulsion actions, you know, putting them off another month, or to the next full board meeting, because generally, that's the reason we end up back in closed session, because board members.
Expulsion, expulsion can be, we didn't have any since the last meeting.